Our Attorney General Josh Stein, and thank him for being here with us today to talk about opioids and just share what's happening on his end. We really appreciate that. So we want to make it as effective and efficient and timely as possible. I think you have a, what's your timeline?
I have a full hour.
An hour?
As long as it's being instructive to everybody, we're here.
Okay, cool. All right. So we'll make sure that that happens. And we have other commissioners here at the table. I just want to acknowledge my other commissioners. Commissioner Carter, Commissioner Burns, Commissioner Jacobs is here, and Commissioner Alum. So we've got the full body here. We could almost be in trouble if we didn't announce it as a special segment. We'd have a quorum. So unless there's, and our manager is here. And the rest of you, if you'd like to introduce yourselves, and then I will turn it over to our Attorney General. We'll start here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff Burkhead.
Clarence Burkhead. Good to see you, sir. Always.
Always.
Good morning. Joanne Pierce, General Manager for Community Health and Wellbeing for Durham County.
Good morning. Gudrun Palmer, I'm the Director of the Criminal Justice Resource Center and serve as the interim General Manager for Safety.
Again, Kim Sewell, County Manager. Great to have you here.
Brian Wardell, Senior Assistant County Attorney.
Good morning. Kristin Patterson, Assistant Health Director.
Good morning. I'm Liz Stevens. I'm the other Assistant Health Director here for Durham.
Good morning. Jeff Changs, I'm the Medical and Laboratory Director at the Durham County Department of Public Health.
I'm Heidi Carter, Durham County Commissioner.
Well, come up here and sit beside me, Mr. Darby. Yes, a whole seat that I saved just for you. That's right. County Commissioner now, Commissioner Burns, thank you for your leadership on this issue, sir. And we have lots of other staff persons here. Please, you have any questions in the audience. But I'm going to turn it over to you. And let's go ahead and get started.
Chair, Howerton, thank you so much. I'm so grateful that you all were able to convene and talk about the opioid crisis. But before we do, I just want to speak to our collective sorrow about what happened in Raleigh last night.
Yes.
The loss of life, including an off-duty officer who I expect was trying to respond to the crisis. And this tragedy has befell our region and state is heartbreaking. And so thank you for allowing me that. Another source of heartbreak is the opioid crisis, the deadliest drug epidemic in American history. And we are at the deadliest moment of that epidemic. From 2019 to 2020, overdose deaths in this country increased by 40% in a single year. From 2020 to 2021, it increased another 15%. So in 2021, more than 100,000 Americans, 108,000 Americans died of an overdose. Two-thirds of those folks had fentanyl in their systems in the autopsy. North Carolina is not immune from these terrible trends. We're seeing an increasing number of people, over 3,500 overdose deaths in 2021. Durham County in 2020 had 71 overdose deaths. So you have felt it intensely here as well. And then you ask yourself, well, how could we get to this place? This is not happening in other parts of the world. It's happening here in the United States. What happened? And tragically, it was greed. Greed of some pharmaceutical companies in the late 90s, early 2000s, who worked hard to convince the medical community that opioids were the most effective way to treat pain, and they were not addictive. And we now know that neither of those things are true. There are more effective ways to treat pain, and certainly, they are highly addictive. So my office helped lead a national bipartisan coalition of attorneys general from practically every state in the country to take Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family and other drug companies to court. And we're winning. We won $26 billion in the national opioid settlement, which was the three major drug distributors, the folks who take the pills from the manufacturer to the drugstore, and one of the manufacturers, Johnson &amp; Johnson, which does generic opioids. $26 billion. We also have $8 billion in settlements in principle against three other generic manufacturers. And we have other active investigation, litigation, and negotiation going on against other companies. So the $26 billion is obviously sizable, but we're not done for your planning purposes. We made a decision, and Durham's share of that is about $14 million over the life of the deal. And in year one, it's over 1.7 million. When I say Durham, that's both the city and the county. Predominantly, the funds are going to counties, but I think it's the 15 largest cities are also getting a chunk. But we made a decision early on in this process, the state did, that we wanted the funds to go to attack the crisis where it is being felt and addressed. And that's predominantly in local government. Sheriff runs the jail. You all have DSS. You have the EMS. You all are the ones who are having to respond to this crisis on a daily basis. And so we trusted you all to use these funds well to address the crisis. So 85% of the $26 billion, 750 million is coming to North Carolina. 85% are going to local governments, 15% of the state. There's not another state that structured it this way. Almost all of them gave the majority, or at least half the money, to the state government and not to local governments. So that was a conscious decision that we made because we want to have the greatest impact we possibly can. But regardless of what level of government it goes to, state or local, or city, county or city, it has to go to attack the crisis. It's a requirement that the funds be set aside in a reserve account. Can't go to fix potholes. It can't go for property tax relief. It has to go to addressing the crisis. And there are four broad categories of money, of uses you can use the money for: prevention, treatment, recovery, or harm reduction strategies. And those broad categories involve a lot of different ideas. And honestly, I feel a little chagrined to be even saying this to Durham County because you all have been on the cutting edge of many of these strategies. And so when I say that these are strategies, you're like, yeah, check, check, check. Because you all have been doing it. But it's evidence-based addiction treatment with medication-assisted therapies, recovery support services, housing, employment, transportation, naloxone distribution, post-overdose response teams, syringe service programs, criminal justice diversion programs, which Sheriff's already been doing, a treatment for people who are in jail, which the Sheriff has already been doing, re-entry programs, which I know you all work exceptionally hard on. So these are all permissible activities. And what I've been doing in recent weeks is traveling around the state and meeting with county officials and law enforcement officials to learn how are they using their money? And also, really, how are they deciding how they're going to use their money? Because a lot of them are undergoing very comprehensive strategic assessments and planning so that they can determine how they want to use it. Yesterday, in Onslow County, they've been going through this community engagement process. They identified what an ideal continuum of care for people with opioid addiction would be, identify what the assets in their community were, what the gaps were in the community, and then prioritize among those initiatives. And it was a very thoughtful approach. And they are in the process of soon recommending to their county commissions. Others have already allocated some funding. So what I'm interested is having a discussion with you, and really just understand how you are wrestling with these issues. Because the unfortunate reality is, it's never going to be enough money. I mean, you all are going to go through that money so quickly because there are many more good ideas than there are dollars to fund them. But the process of coming up with a strategic plan will be helpful because if we come up with new sources of funds from other cases, you can tap into that. If there are other grant funds from the federal government, you can tap into that. So we hope it's a useful process for you. And we have a tool called the Community Opioid Resources Engine of North Carolina, Core NC. A lot of words for a website. And it's got a ton of useful data. It's got ideas that different counties, and you all are featured, are doing to tackle the crisis. It's got data like overdose death rates, prescription pill usage rates, social determinants of health. So it's county by county, but it's also for every county in the state. It's just a really good tool. And then there will be a third part, which is under construction, which is called the Investments Dashboard. And this is really for the benefit of the people of North Carolina in that we want full transparency on the decisions that the state makes and the county makes. And counties are required to identify every group they fund, how much did they fund, and critically, what were the outcomes of that investment? Because we want the money to mean something. And that means if you all pursue a strategy, and for two or three years, it's just not working, find a different strategy because there are others out there that will work. I wanted to say a word about my good friend, the Sheriff, because you all, having done this MAT in the jails, you all are on the front edge on this. And to recognize you have folks in your jails who are addicted and have engaged in crime, but their crime is almost exclusively driven by their addiction. And if you can address their addiction, you can break that cycle of criminal behavior, which is great for that individual, and it's great for all of us. We want to drive down crime rates. And so your Sheriff has been great on that. Sheriff Burkhead has been a leader on our task force for racial equity in criminal justice to identify wide-ranging reforms we can make to the criminal justice system. And he's been a great partner, Satana DeBarry, on rape kits. You all are on the, again, leading edge of how to tackle a backlog of untested sexual assault kits. And so I thank you, District Attorney.
Sheriff, thank you for all you do for the people of Durham County.
And so as I travel around the state and I encounter people of immense goodwill and passion, there's so much commitment to tackling this crisis and to helping people live better lives. And then I also met many, many people who are in long-term recovery. And really, just they personify the hope that we want to spread, which is that there is a life in recovery, that there are more people living a life in recovery, long-term recovery, than there are in active addiction. And we just have to help people who are in that dark place realize that there is a better future for them. And you combine that dedication, passion, and creativity with this source of funding that we've been able to secure, I'm so optimistic about what we will collectively do. And what I'm certain of is that next year and the year after that, and the year after that, there will be people alive and healthy in Durham County that otherwise would have been. And so I'm just grateful for the good work that you all have already done and eager to see the great work you will do. Thank you, Chair.
You are welcome. Thank you. And I'll thank you again for your fight to make this happen because it wasn't just going to happen.
It didn't. I assure you, it did not just happen.
No, I've been around for a while, for a few years, and know when all the fight began. And we appreciate your fight to make this happen and take care of citizens across the state of North Carolina. So at this time, we will open it up for questions or comments. We can, any questions, or we just can follow the agenda to the next item here? Updates on the planning process? Want to do that? Okay.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And thank you again, Attorney General Stein, for lifting up the work that we are doing here in Durham County to address the issue. And to your point about the comprehensive strategic process, that is certainly the method that we intend to employ. We are doing a lot, but we don't want to assume that what we're doing is effective. And so we are planning a survey process that will go out to our entire community to ask them, what do you think, what should we be doing? Are there gaps in the services that are being provided? And based on that data that we get, we intend to have a town hall to discuss the findings and the data that came out of that survey. But I'd like to turn it over to our staff, Gudrun Palmer and Joanne Pierce, if they have any more to add, because they are, you know, boots on the ground in helping lead the effort and the work that's happening to address.
Good morning again. So we have been looking at it, right? And we have been discussing it. We actually had a conversation with our board in early September. And Durham County has been discussing the opioid crisis. And also, our problem is polysubstance use. It's not just, it's never only opioids. So we have the Durham Joints Together Task Force that came out of a North Carolina Association of County Commissioner initiative several years ago. We have been continuing to meet regularly. We have a monthly committee meeting that discusses opioid treatment options that we have here in Durham. But we briefed the board, again, on the opioid settlement framework and then discussed the path forward. And we have already taken a look at the 12 strategies on the Option A and identified our inventory in Durham, which is continuously changing and growing with treatment options. And as our managers mentioned, we intend to roll out a website, a survey, have a town hall, and then bring some recommendations and findings to the board to make some decisions and hopefully have some quick wins and maybe fund some of our already existing programs that are not sufficiently funded or currently are grant-funded. And then continue to look at the options because, as you said, it's 18 years. And just because we fund something now, we can fund something different in a few years. So that's our path forward that we have proposed to the board. And I think we are moving fairly quickly here in the next few months. Joanne?
Gudrun really explained that very well. I will just say that we certainly recognize that it requires a multi-pronged, multi-system, coordinated, and strategic approach to addressing the issue that also looks at, as you mentioned, Mr. Attorney General, the root cause and also embedding equity. And we've been meeting because we know that it's not just a public health crisis. It crosses many different sectors, our social service system, Criminal Justice Resource Center Department, and also the Sheriff's Office, and just community. And so we have the meeting and having those discussions. Who is most impacted? How do we address it? And the four-pronged approach that you've mentioned about prevention, treatment, recovery, and harm reduction. And today also, we have our Medical Director for our Public Health Department, our two Deputy Public Health Directors here with us as well to even talk about that work that we're doing there. So we are poised to do the work. We are poised to gather additional information and data to see how we can enhance and strengthen the work that we're already doing. And we know the, as you've mentioned, the funds won't necessarily solve everything. But what can we do to have the most impact on the people that we serve? Thank you.
So if we are, if there are no questions, probably it's best to just continue with the agenda and have the questions at the end. So the next area is Durham Health, County Health Updates, Public Health.
I'll start us off and pass to my colleagues. Good morning again. Thank you so much for being here. I so appreciate what General Manager Pierce just shared about the fact that we know this crisis crosses so many different areas and touches people in so many different aspects of their life. And I think that the activities that we're doing within public health really are across the department and include so much work with our community-based organizations and our community partners, with our clients, with other staff among the county and among the city. So I think that just really rings true with what our efforts look like in public health. I'll speak a bit to some of what we're doing out of our pharmacy. That's one of the areas that I'm over in my role. So through our pharmacy, we are distributing safe syringe kits from the department daily. We also are distributing naloxone kits from the department for folks to pick up. We have them in all of our clinics. We have them being brought to outreach events. Kristin will speak to some of our outreach teams who are actually out providing the safe syringe and naloxone kits to folks in the community. But we did share on the handout that you'll see here, just some of our statistics for the past couple of years. Since we've had this safe syringe program and naloxone programs in place, we've seen a steady increase, which has been wonderful. And I'll mention particularly around the pandemic. We know that everything changed for everyone with COVID. And we saw that reflected in many of our services within public health. But as we started coming out of the pandemic, we really saw an uptick in the utilization of our safe syringe kits and our naloxone kits. So we kind of, we suspect that word is out in the community. We've been providing these services for a while. And we have some really trusted, really trusting clients who continue to spread the word. So as people started kind of coming out again after the pandemic, we saw that they were certainly coming to us and utilizing these harm reduction tools. So I'll pass to Kristin to speak a little bit about our outreach.
Good morning again. Again, my name is Kristin Patterson. And I'm over the Outreach, Health Education part of the Health Department. And when, within our department, we actually go out. So we are actually boots on the ground. And whenever you're boots on the ground, you see, of course, we deal with STIs. But a lot of times, whenever we're engaging with our community, we ask them, what got you to this point in life that you're now positive with either HIV or some type of STI? Well, a lot of it is because they were trying to get their fix of drugs. So they are on opioids, and they're doing whatever they have to do to get this drug. So we know that, you know, it does increase the STIs because, you know, like I said, they're trying to get this fixed. So we do have our teams out there with the naloxone, with safe syringes. Or we tell them, oh, you can come to the Health Department. No one's going to judge you. Because a lot of stigma is to that, you know? But we have to let our clients know, we're not here to judge. We're here to help. And what does help look like to you guys? Because we can say what we think help look like, but until we meet those folks on where they are and ask, what does help means to you? Then that's how we're more effective. And we do work with harm reduction, but we don't just partner with them. We actively work. Because we see partnerships, but they're just partnerships around the table. But when you're actually on the street, we have to make sure that we're actively engaging. So we bring harm reduction with us, and we're actually talking to people and really listening and not talking at them. Because that's some of the things that we experienced in the past. Our community are always saying, you're talking at us, but you're not listening to us while we're here. Because no one just wake up and say, I'm going to do drugs today or, you know, engage in risky behavior. Something, like you said, there's a root cause. So we try to get to the root cause to find out what's going on and how can we assist.
If somebody you offer services to says to you, you know what? I'm ready to take this down. I need help. Who do you connect them with, and how does that work?
We do have resources that, like I said, we are actively working with our community-based clinicians in our community. So we do link them to, we don't just give them a phone number. We call, we make that first initial appointment, and we link them into care. And we, in our team, we do follow up to make sure that they stay in care or... Yes.
One of the things that I think is really great about what we do is we work very closely with EMS. And so you can see this kind of, this bottom table here. These are the number of times EMS has responded to opiate-related. So not exclusively, but typically overdoses. And we have a peer support system, which I think, you know, maybe answers some of the questions you were asking, that they are working closely with EMS. So they will try to make contact with that person within 72 hours and ask them, okay, what sorts of services can we help you with? Is it housing? Is it food? Or are you ready to make, you know, take that step, you know, regarding, you know, starting on medication? And so, you know, we make every effort to, you know, reach those people. It can be challenging at times, depending on the social, you know, circumstances of the individual who's overdosed. And I think that's where potentially more, you know, more resources will help. The person that runs this program only works part-time. She's only funded part-time. And we really need someone, you know, that can, you know, try to tackle these issues full-time.
And just one more thing. I just, just hearing, we've just really leaned into the issue, the problem, because it's not going to go away on its own. And we've determined and know that effective diagnosis will determine effective treatment. And so those of us, you know, when we think about those of us maybe across the state or the country who will be effective, are going to be those of us who are willing to go all in to really unpack what's happening, why people are situated differently in society and having these outcomes, and really being bold and willing enough to roll up our sleeves and just really implement novel intervention activities that will also cause our systems to change where they need to change in policies and practices and procedures. Thank you.
Finished? Okay, thank you. All right. Now we go to our justice system updates. Sheriff Burkhead and our DA. Yeah.
You pass it to me?
Whichever.
Oh, absolutely.
One of y'all.
No, I'm always eager to talk about the great work that we're doing. Thank you, Mr. Attorney General, and thank you for your earlier comments. In the detention center, we started MAT in 2019, shortly after I became Chair. And we have continued to expand that program. We now have, we now call it SMART, Sheriff's Medicated, Medication-Assisted, Restorative, and Treatment because we want to treat the whole person. And just throw out some numbers. Since then, since those 2019, we've treated 258 men and women directly through our MAT program. And we've had right at a 21% recidivism rate, which is fantastic. Those folks who are getting treatment are not returning to our facility. We too are connected...
So you said 28% recidivism?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Seventy-nine not.
Yeah, not, correct. And we are connecting those individuals to external resources once they are released. We have partnerships all across the county. We have our peer support program that, again, like public health, follows those individuals, makes sure they get their appointments, makes sure they take their medication. They do come back to us, we try to figure out what happened, where the breakdowns occurred. My team, you see most of them sitting in the audience, really work day in and day out to address this addiction issue in our facility. And we're happy to do it in the facility. We would love to pass the torch to someone else. But right now, we are it as far as those who are incarcerated, been arrested for a crime, as you mentioned a moment ago, that was committed largely to feed their addiction. And so we do not want to continue to criminalize that medical condition. We want to help them as much as possible. We are going into phase two. We're in phase two. We've had a conversation with the board and the manager about how we can expand our services moving forward. So perhaps some of the opioid money that's coming to the county will fund my medical director that we're requesting so we can pay more attention to the needs of the individuals in our facility. And again, administer methadone and morphine and really create a patient care plan for those individuals who are incarcerated so we can have a smooth handoff when they are released. So we're excited about it. And I will say, we were the first detention center in North Carolina to institute MAT. Mecklenburg followed our lead shortly thereafter. We're just proud of the work that we're doing. And hats off to my staff, day in and day out. And we too, during COVID, saw a slight increase. And so we continued delivering these services throughout the height of the pandemic.
So I wanted to let the Sheriff go first because we like to say in our office, we're not first responders, we're the last responders. And so we have, we work really closely with Criminal Justice Resource Center in our two criminal justice diversion programs. We have both a pre-trial diversion program as well as a post-adjudication. We have both a pre-trial diversion program as well as a post-adjudication program. We, we kind of essentially call the, we call the pre-trial one mental health court. And we call the post-adjudication one drug court. I think we've been talking about how we talk about our recovery courts as opposed to kind of delineating them that way. But we have found, we, we are focused on harm reduction in both of those courts. I think our major challenge in our post-adjudication court has been MAT. And having a community MAT provider. As we try to move this post-adjudication court away from using jail as a sanction, we, it's challenging because our main Medicaid-assisted treatment program is in the jail. And so we, the, what is it? Best evidence? Best practice. The best practice for a recovery court is that you do not use your detention center as a sanction. And so we are committed to not doing that. And yet we need more places because the thing that we know about people who use is that they're going to use. And that they can follow through on kind of all of the requirements of the court. But sometimes they're going to take a step back. And what we don't want to be doing is putting people in the detention center for doing what we know they are going to do. So there's that part. In my office, my assistant district attorneys have been working with the outreach team and peer support to really identify what possession looks like as opposed to what dealing looks like. So people who use opioids can possess a tremendous amount of that substance because they use all day. And they use in pairs to protect each other's, their safety. One person may buy, another person may hold. That's to keep them from being robbed. It is so that they can help each other if they overdose. And so having an understanding of that has really changed the way that we prosecute. And so we can see, as you know, the North Carolina drug laws over penalize the possession of heroin. You can get, you can have trafficking weights without being a trafficker. And so now we have come to understand the difference between possessing a large amount for the, for the use of you and your partner as opposed to the trafficking. And so, you know, I want to thank the sheriff and Gudrun because we are all pulling in the same direction. We have, you know, little holes here and there that we're trying to fill. But a big one is, is community-based MAT as well as kind of supportive transitional housing for people.
I, I was going to ask about the, exactly that, community resources for treatment. What the sort of census is in Durham County. I'm aware of Trosa, which has wonderful services, but they don't offer MAT. And so for some people, I mean, there's some addictions for which medication doesn't work. You know, methamphetamine or cocaine. But there are other addictions like opioids where there is actual medication that can help in someone's long-term recovery as part of their medical treatment. And so do they exist? Are there outpatient services and...
So I, I've been thanks to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners launching initiative many years ago. I've been co-chairing our community-wide task force called Durham Joins Together to Save Lives. And honestly, that has been the foundation of what we have now because it is a collective impact model. We're a cross-system model and it allowed us to get grants. The way the MAT program and the jail started was from a grant. And now it's locally funded. We have a Linkages to Care program through the, through public health that is tracking what happens with our opioid response when somebody overdoses, how they, using peer support, getting them into treatment. All of these things have happened because we've been successful, because we have collaboration across sectors and we've been able to get a lot of grants. We just got a grant for our familiar faces. Our EMS program is, got over a million dollars now. For four years, we, they're going to start distributing fentanyl strips, Narcan. But what I'm really excited about is we're going to start a bridge program where our EMS, our paramedics, community paramedics are going to be able to offer MAT on the spot when somebody overdoses. And that, I think that's what, some of the lessons learned for us is, as we heard, we have to go where people are. We, we have to reduce the barriers and then the recovery piece. But we have Lincoln Community Health Center is one of our big providers for MAT. We also have other providers in the community. But Lincoln is, to the, to our DA's point about a community-based program, we are about to open a just an MAT standalone facility in Lakewood Shopping Center. But we know that one of the barriers has been the copay. Even if it's a dollar, five dollars, the city is using all of their MAT funds, I mean, sorry, all of their opioid funds for Lincoln, at least for the first few years. And that's going to really help with that. But I, I just, I, I personally just wanted to share that, you know, for me, one of the messages has been about recovery and, and the support that we have to provide long-term. And related to the question about supportive housing, again, we need, you know, hopefully we'll look at additional funding for that. And, and, and also the importance of the peer support specialists. They, they are really the vital link in, in helping people through this whole journey.
That all makes, that all makes sense to me. Just one point I want to underline is that when we want more service providers to offer health care in the form of MAT to people, we have to find out ways to pay them because people don't provide services for free. And most people pay for their health care with health insurance. But this population typically is not insured. And that's why it's imperative that the General Assembly expand Medicaid because hundreds of thousands of neighbors would not have health insurance. They'd have a means to pay for their health care and that would include MAT. I have a feeling this is a table I don't need to persuade. But we just got to keep talking about it. We got to keep talking about it. Because we're, we're at a moment where it's more likely than it's ever been because the President Protam has endorsed it, the Speaker of the House has endorsed it. Of course, the governor is longtime champion. So let's make the moment worth something.
Agree with you there, wholeheartedly. Commissioner Burns?
Mine was relatively quick. Thank you for saying expanded Medicaid so I didn't have to. But I think the initial question was about like what other resources we have. And I think Commissioner Jacobs did a great job of enveloping everything. But I hope that it illustrates, if nothing else, that it is in the marrow of every department in this building. You know, we have, the fact that our EMS staff is on board, that is not what you will see from Murphy de Manio. By virtue of this settlement and the way it's coming down, it's a Murphy de Manio issue, but you don't have that type of energy. And we do have it here. We're blessed and lucky to have it. Your question was about what other spaces. Another example that has been traveling with County Commissioners Association and Jason King and a lot of work that they've been doing is Jubilee Home. That is right here in Durham. Thank you, I was, yeah, so we do have other pockets outside of Trosa. One of the things that when Jubilee Home actually presents, they make it very clear, if they had 10 more houses, they could fill them. And people would come in because their success rate is so high, their recidivism rate is so low. And I, I bring that up because I want to at least showcase, people want help. Like they, and I think that one's male-focused, y'all keep me Jubilees. So, you know, I also want to uplift, this is an all-women board. We have to think about these safe spaces for women as well. So I did want to interject that because so many of them are very male-focused. And, and that includes here, and there is another Jubilee Home. But, and I think my last point that I'll make, I'm, I'm excited that you're leading this effort. I don't, I'm pretty sure everybody got the mail. We have a great staff here. Our public health staff is very knowledgeable. But you took the initiative to send everybody a handout that said, this is how much money your county is getting. You would not believe how many of our colleagues did not even know money was coming. But for your letter, right, but for that. And so knowing they didn't know that, Naco did a, I think some of this was beforehand. Naco had already done, not Naco, Kevin Leonard would kill me. North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, NCACC, they did a two-day forum at the Grandover. And I sat down and the very first thing somebody said to me was, who do you work for? And I'm always intrigued and I, I can't be a county commissioner, but... And she said, who do you work for? And it was because 80% of the room was consultants. That day that we came to, Dr. Soell was with me. They literally had chairs on the walls. So I do just want to interject, there are people trying to profit off of this problem. And the same way you fight scam artists, artists, the same way you've led on this. I hope that we can get the help that we need to these other counties where they don't spend money in consultants because that's what we see happening.
Just one, I appreciate all that, of course, Burns. County Commissioners Association has been just an incredible ally with us in this work. And they got actually a small amount of money out of the settlement as well. And they've used it to hire a woman, I think she's a Durham resident, Nitti Sichdeva.
She's working with us.
She's working with us.
So I was just going to say, Nitti is an incredible asset. And she exists to support the work of county commissioners. They don't have to hire consultants because she's there to advise. And so I'm again telling you all something you don't need, you already know.
Well, you know, the, the North Carolina Association of Counties have been very instrumental in assisting all counties, including Durham, of finding innovative ways to do all kinds of things. Most of us, most of the commissioners have been a part of the association for years. And, you know, I've been there for, for a few minutes. As a matter of fact, I'm heading to a board meeting shortly. But they have all of these sessions and trainings that all of us participate in. And they, and Kevin and the team has been absolutely incredible in lifting this conversation up and making sure that we have the tools and information that we need. And also at the national level, the National Association of Counties have been bringing forth information that we can use and ways that we can bring to our counties to help our citizens. So this is such, such an important conversation. And you know, the, I, I guess, you know, when you've been around for a minute, I, it takes me back to one of the commissioners when he was the president of the association. His son passed away from opioid. And his initiative was to do something about opioids and the debt. Yeah, yeah. So this is a longstanding conversation that we need to save lives rather than continue to lose lives. So I just wanted to bring that up because we, you know, sometimes things get put on the table and you don't think they're important. And then they do become important. So I will never forget him fighting for us as commissioners to really lift this conversation up.
I was with him in Stanley County a couple weeks ago.
Yeah. He's still fighting. You got to fight. Other questions, comments, concerns you want to share?
Thanks. One, what I think I've heard that would be really important is that we can also use our data to shift the narrative about who's having, more often people are in recovery, moving to recovery. And if we can uplift that as well, because we're often talking about, obviously, those who are not, you know, having the best outcomes. However, while we're doing that, making the case for that, we should also uplift those who are having those successes. Because I think that's going to be really important for a larger buy-in. And one other program that we have is the Formerly Incarcerated Transition Program, which is key because we have, we know through data that the most vulnerable time for someone could be when they're being released from detention or incarceration, where you're just overstimulated. You've been away for a while, you're in sort of recovery, and now you're having to deal with food, safety, shelter. Now you have all these requirements that you have to be here, there, and everywhere. And that's, that's a really important moment where people have really bad outcomes. And so we've also sort of put together a program to fill in that gap. So then you have a soft handoff to someone who works in the health department who says, hey, you know, what are your most immediate pressing needs? Because we always go back to Maslow's hierarchy of need. Like, are, are your basic needs being met before we kind of want you to self-actualize? So those few things.
I want to address both of your points in a single story, which is our mutual friend Sheriff Miller up in Buncombe. I don't know if he got, it was either Duke or RTI has done an analysis of his MAT program. RTI. And I don't know if they've done yours yet. But what they've done is measure the impact of the MAT program in the jail. And what they've discovered is because, Duran's absolutely right, that the people most at risk of overdose death are those leaving incarceration because they were addicted before they went to jail. They're addicted while they're in jail, they're just not using. They're addicted when they get out of jail and they use at the old level and their body doesn't have the tolerance for it. And so then they overdose and die. Something like 40 times the death rate of the general using population.
Wow.
Well, what they've achieved in Buncombe, and they have the data, and I wager to say, Sheriff, you have a similar story to tell, if we can get the data, is the death rate of people leaving jail in Buncombe County is below the death rate of the general population, which is a tremendous accomplishment. It's because they do the MAT in jail with the peer support specialist and then the warm handoff to the outpatient MAT providers. And they're having same experience with reduced recidivism. It's, it's exactly what we want to see happening. But that's why we have this database where we're going to require full transparency. Part of it is to incent counties to do the measurement. Is this program actually saving lives? Because I think you're right that the more, I think there's a lot of positive stories that exist that we haven't captured in number. And the more we have those numbers and that data, it starts to snowball and we've got a better story to tell. And then you're giving more hope to people who are struggling and they realize there is a chance for them. It all builds on itself.
I'd like to piggyback on one thing related to our formerly incarcerated transitions program because I'm so glad you brought that up. It's a small but mighty program that we have in public health that works. And I think that one of the strengths of that program is that it utilizes community health workers to connect with folks who have just come out of incarceration and to really walk them through those early days and weeks and months transitioning back into a supportive community. And I think that the community health worker piece is key because these are professionals with lived experience that can relate to some of the challenges that the, their clients are dealing with. And I continue to dwell on the fact that we, we learned a lot about community health workers during COVID, right? We saw the effectiveness of community health workers in lots of different ways. And I think that we need to continue, I, I continue to talk and we continue to talk within public health about how do we keep that going? And what are the other places and ways that community health workers or peer support specialists or folks with lived experience working directly with the communities that they are a part of? How can that help to move the needle forward? So I think that's something that just statewide, we need to continue to keep, keep high on our radar because we saw aspects of, of peer support and community health worker activity that, that really worked during COVID. And it very much relates to the, the topic at hand.
I just want to follow up on that quickly and say the, you know, whether it's substance abuse, whether it's gun violence, all of the issues that we're facing, especially as an urban community, the thing that we know is that case management works. And that's the only thing that's ever worked and it's the only thing that ever will work. And I think as we talk about, how do we talk about these challenge, these unique modern challenges that face us? We need to be talking about what it means to have just case management, having people in that community, working with other people in that community to make things better. And so that's just my soapbox.
That raises a question for me, Satana and Liz. I'm just wondering, hearing about the importance of the community health worker and also the, the case manager. So in addition to not having enough funding, funding being inadequate to pay for the services, is there also a shortage of people who are trained as community health workers or peer support specialists? And is some, is that something that we should be thinking about as a community as well?
And is that something that we should be thinking about as a community as well?
Yeah, I think as it relates to community health workers, I feel like there is a lot of activity happening statewide around community health worker certification and training to kind of continue to grow that group. But yes, I would say definitely, there, there is a need to be sure that the folks that we're putting into those positions are doing so in a prepared way, right? To do, avoid, avoid doing harm. So yes.
You know, maybe five or 10 years ago, we were working in Durham to, and across the state to develop a certification program for community health workers. And there's one at Durham Tech now. Didn't used to be. Joey Pierce is nodding because she and I served on that same task force. But just wondering if Durham Tech has something similar for peer support specialists?
But whenever I was on that task force and of course, you know, when the funding ended, so did the task force, that was some of the issues was the funding to be able to send, you know, the ones who want to become certified. Yeah.
These seem like easy problems to solve. You know, we've got money coming in and we've identified two instances where we need more funding. Now we need to develop the skillset of peer support specialists, community health workers. And also we needed to pay for the MAT services for patients. So we just need to connect them to the care. I just think that recovery, the statistics show that recovery doesn't happen as readily for people who aren't receiving the standard of care, which is medicine for treatment. And so that's where we, I feel like we really need to connect people to that care and then we need to be sure we've got the support specialists. And if we can work with Durham Tech and the new allied health building to have a good program there, maybe that's, those are two good places to, to focus.
Not to brag on Durham County government and I'll work and.
Notice, okay, brag.
Okay. So our community health workers were very instrumental in the, in public health department in helping to put that program together for Durham Tech. That's one thing. Even asking to come in to teach courses because you have these lived experience professionals, paraprofessionals coming to provide training and support for the next generation of folks. And also I had the pleasure of serving on the state's community health workers work where as our deputy health director mentioned, we were looking at, you know, how to do the credentialing and how would it work where if someone became a certified community health worker, would it be portable? Can they go to another county? So all of those things were being worked out. And also Sheriff Howard Ten and Commissioner Carter were on the Board of Health at the time when we were having those conversations. And so again, our public health, many of our departments across our county, Department Enterprise, we're willing to just, you know, be on the cutting edge, bleeding edge even to really make change that we know structurally we need. So just wanted to share that.
Just before Commissioner Jacobs, what are you hearing across the state regarding the need for clinical workers or for nurses? We are hearing, there, we know there's a shortage all over. And I know that Duke is doing training and certification and UNC and Durham Tech is working. What are you hearing from other places?
There's a great need. All across the state, healthcare workers are in high demand. That is another reason why expanding Medicaid is so critical because if you have 600,000 people with insurance who can now pay for their healthcare and healthcare providers have a means to compensate staff. But we still need to increase the, it's the same issue about the flow of trained personnel. We need to increase the number of people who are nursing school or PA school, even in medical school. So there are a lot of structural problems with our healthcare system that we need to work on at the same time.
Thank you Attorney General Stein. Yeah, we're talking about, obviously, you know, you don't have to preach Medicaid expansion to us as a board, but I think also when we're having that conversation of Medicaid expansion, we also need to talk about the roadblocks that would still exist within Medicaid expansion. And I know I've talked to Sheriff Burkhead briefly about this and Gudrun about the Medicaid inmate exclusion policy, that we need to get federal level change to make sure that individuals who are leaving our jails, who are currently in our jails, that once they have Medicaid, that they're able to receive the behavioral health services that'll be funded. And that's going to take us as a board and as Attorney General advocating for that at the federal level to make sure that once we expand Medicaid here in North Carolina, everyone is able to have access to the resources that that will provide.
I just wanted to, on this, I think this is a very important discussion about the pipeline of peer support specialists and community health workers when we talk about the system. And Gudrun, if you could just talk a little bit about the resources and the training related to peer support specialists? And one other issue I wanted to raise is that, and another important purpose for these folks is that, that we're providing employment for people. That's part of the recovery process is that people have to have jobs and we're, that's a barrier, especially people who are criminal justice involved. And if we can be paying folks who in the role now as a community health worker or a peer support specialist, we're also benefiting those folks.
So before we go to Gudrun, so to keep you on your schedule, it's 11 o'clock. So we give her five, five more minutes. If you can give us five more minutes, we'll wrap it up. Okay.
So we actually had a conversation as part of our committee around peer support and persons with lived experience because we know that individuals can get trained. UNC Chapel Hill has a training for peer support, but there is a special component for persons that are justice involved that needs to happen as well. Because, you know, they, and then the, the next piece is the continuous support. And that's also, Jubilee Home was talking about that, that persons jump right in and, and, and want to help so much that they burn themselves out or they don't, they're not continuing to, to watch that line and, and fall back themselves or, or do harm instead of helping individuals. So we are, obviously many communities now have a local reentry council that has funding from DPS, NC DPS for, for training, education. So there are opportunities to, to assist individuals with paying for that training. But then we were actually hoping we could get some ARPA money to, to build a re, a peer support network in Durham where, where we can develop that pipeline and provide the training, the additional criminal justice component, and then the continued support and basically build a support network for peer supports.
That's a great idea. Is there a statewide association or network? That would be a great gathering. You'll host the statewide.
Peer support.
Economic development, here we go.
Yeah, I've asked the new president of the association to have, host a conference right here in Durham. I'm pushing her to do that in Durham. Maybe that would be the one to talk to her about doing. I said, we so appreciate you taking the time to come and be with us this morning and just let us know where things are and where they're headed. And we are here for any questions that you may have later on. And we just want to keep this rolling and do the best job we can for citizens of Durham.
As I've been on the job for six years and trying to wrestle with how can we make systems work better for people, I have relied on y'all's expertise time and time again because you all are on the cutting edge of how to serve constituents, many of whom have had a bad run. And I thank you for your sharing with me up until this time and even in this, this morning. Very eager to see the successes that I'm certain you're going to have with the funds once you finish your strategic planning and start making the investments. Thank you for having me today.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, thanks so much.
You're welcome, thank you. A pleasure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been good.
Thanks. Enjoyed our conversation this morning too. Hannah, good seeing you.